Welcome to the Auburn Board of Selectmen meeting on December 9, 2019. Per the open meeting law, I ask that anybody who's recording this meeting, this meeting is being recorded. Being none, can we all stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. First thing on the agenda, we have a public comments, and I'll invite Fire Chief Steve Coleman. He is here on fire safety issues and in part, I requested because I've had a phone call about how this is handled, and I'll turn it over to the Fire Chief to let him explain the procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have three specific issues that I just want to address tonight very quickly, seasonal issues. And then I know the chairman had a question, so when I'm done with these three issues, if you want to ask a pointed question, that might be easier, just to make sure that I cover exactly what is covered. But the three things that I wanted to talk about tonight fairly quickly, because we've seen a little bit of an uptick in it in the last two to three weeks as we roll into the winter season. The first is just a reminder to the residents and the business community, and we're very fortunate here that we do a lot of public outreach. We speak to the Chamber of Commerce. They do a great job of pushing information out to the business community between our social media, working with the schools. The school superintendent also pushes out email blasts through the school department relative to hydrant shoveling. We have very good compliance, I guess, if you will, but the residents of the community, the business community, they do take shoveling hydrants after a storm seriously. I did some driving around at the end of last week just to check some neighborhoods, and we were in pretty good shape. So I just want to thank the business community and the residents for that, but it's never-ending. Every time it snows, we ask for the public's help to what we call adopt a hydrant in their neighborhood, and we have a lot of participation from children, which is nice. This last snowstorm, I probably received 20 or 21 photographs either through our social media or emailed to me of kids posing with their shovels next to the hydrant, demonstrating their work, and that was awesome and great to see. So again, just a reminder that after a storm, we have over 500 hydrants in town, and we can't do it all within the days after a storm. When we go out on emergency calls, we're on a particular street, we look at the hydrants, we'll shovel out what needs to be done, but we can't do it within that first 24 to 48 hours without the residents' help. But fortunately, over the years, they've stepped up and done a very good job with that. The next thing that I just want to talk about is we've had an uptick lately, over the last couple of weeks, in the amount of carbon monoxide responses that we do. Just want to remind the residents that Massachusetts general law requires a carbon monoxide detector in your home, providing you have a fossil fuel burning appliance. So if you have an oil burner, if you have natural gas or propane, if you have some sort of a fossil fuel burning appliance that heats your home, law requires that you have a carbon monoxide detector on each level of the home where there's living space. So if you have electric heat, and that's the only source of heat that you have, and there's no other appliances, it's not required. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's not a good idea, but the law is really driven around fuel burning appliances, and that would include any sort of a fireplace or a wood stove. We've responded almost on a daily basis over the last couple of weeks. As a matter of fact, within the hour before I came here tonight, they may even still be there. One of the engine companies was working a carbon monoxide call within the hour. Many of them have revolved around their oil burners malfunctioning because they hadn't been serviced in a while. So it's a good reminder to the residents as well to, on an annual basis, you should contact a professional to come out, take a look at your oil burning equipment, just make sure that it's running in good order, that it's cleaned, the filters on the oil tank are changed. There is a process in order to make sure that equipment is running efficiently. The majority of the problems that we see carbon monoxide related, especially secondary to a fuel burning source, is again, like I said, the equipment had not been tested or cleaned in many years, and it's just, it's running at a very low efficiency rate, which promotes the carbon monoxide within the resident. If you have a carbon monoxide detector and it goes off, that is an emergency. Don't hesitate. Dial 911. Leave the residence, but when you leave the residence, make sure that you close doors and windows. This time of year, most people don't have their windows open, but in order for us to get there and monitor the area with a meter and try to isolate where the problem is, it's impossible for us to do if you leave a door or open the window. The carbon monoxide essentially almost immediately escapes, and it makes it very, very difficult. So make sure the house is buttoned up. Leave. We'll be there in a couple of minutes, and we'll be able to monitor the house and hopefully point you in a direction of where the carbon monoxide is coming from. And the last thing that I want to touch on, which I can't even believe that I'm talking about this before Christmas, but it does seem, for whatever reason, we've had a couple of calls, and it seems to be an issue earlier, is that of ice and ice safety. We responded to a call last night over in the Leicester Street area for a resident thought that they saw some four-wheelers out on the ice, and they thought that they went through the ice. Fortunately, it appears that they were just kind of riding along the shore, but we did see signs of footsteps that were on the ice, and the ice in no way, shape, or form is safe at this point. I mean, it's been raining all day, so whatever ice maybe did form in the, as far as an inch or an inch and a half, that's all but evaporated today. So we, the town, the fire rescue department, our position is that no ice is ever safe. There's so many factors that go into making ice safe, whether or not there are currents running through that lake or pond. You could have areas that have a foot and a half thickness in one area and four inches of thickness 15 feet away. There's really no rhyme or reason. Nature decides that in terms of ice thickness. So we're fortunate in this community that we do have some safe options with the skating arena, but we know it is inevitable that people are going to be out on the ice. We just ask you to use extreme caution, make sure that you take proper steps before going on the ice. But even though we've had some cold temperatures, that in no way has made safe ice conditions up to this point. So those were the three things that we've been, again, sort of had an uptick, not only in questions, but in actual response over the last couple of weeks that I wanted to address, but I'd certainly entertain any questions from the board and see if I can answer any more questions you may have.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. If I can just ask a follow-up question and then another issue. On the carbon monoxide, I know that, from personal experience actually, in my family, at what level does it detect it? Because I know you lose your cognitive ability to say, like, something's wrong here, I need to react. Do those carbon monoxide detectors measure it at a level that you're still able to make a decision?
Yeah, that's a great question. And carbon monoxide technology has changed over the last decade. Carbon monoxide detectors of, let's say, 10 years ago, which I'm sure many residents maybe still have a carbon monoxide detector that's 10 or 15 years old. The reality is, is that anything that's over 10 years old, both for smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, should be replaced because there's sensors inside of those that just, over time, they wear down. But the old technology of carbon monoxide, it used to build cumulatively. So you could have lower levels of carbon monoxide. I mean, there's carbon monoxide in this room right now. We're all living with it in some way, but it would basically build over time, and then once it sensed a dangerous level, then it would activate. That technology has changed today where it goes off on much lower levels than it did a long time ago. So we consider anything to be over 10 parts per million, because again, carbon monoxide is cumulative. So anything 10 parts per million or higher, we consider to be dangerous, because the longer that you're in that environment, even in a 10-part-per-million area, over that eight or nine-hour period, your levels of carbon monoxide are going to be much higher because you've stayed in that environment. So detectors now go off, we may go into a home, and we're detecting maybe five or six parts per million. So the technology is very good where it is allowing you to kind of make decisions without your cognitive behavior being affected. So it goes off on very low levels.
So you recommend that if anyone has detectors that are 10 years or older?
Yes. If you have some, again, Mass general law requires that anything over 10 years, if we were to inspect that upon inspection, it would actually fail the inspection because they can't have a manufacturer date of ownership.
It's something you don't think of, you just know that it's there?
Yeah, exactly.
And the other, unfortunately, in the winter, there are so many safety concerns, but I did see it on the news. One that you didn't touch on, which I think you should take the opportunity here, is snowblower safety.
Yes, you're right. And actually, we had one of the first incidents in the state. So we do a couple of snowblower emergencies a year, at least. The very first snowstorm that we had on that Monday, we responded to a snowblower emergency. Again, I think one of the things that in my conversations with the public when we talk about snow blowers, I think everybody gets that when it's moving, you don't stick your hand or your foot in it, right? I think everybody gets that. What a lot of people don't understand is that even when you shut the snowblower off and the engine is not running and the auger is not spinning, there is still tension built in that auger. So even if you were to touch that, it may be enough to just sort of spin that auger back in the opposite direction to relieve any tension that it has in the blade. And typically, that's where we see the injuries. I can't remember a time in my career that someone said, "Oh, it was running," and I stuck my hand in there. It's always that tension issue. So what you should do is, if you have a clog in your snowblower, shut it off and then get some sort of a stick or a broom, a hockey stick works good, and use that device to manipulate cleaning the chute and freeing the clog. Even if you think there's no tension in it, it's not worth it. Again, they're machines, they're unpredictable. But unfortunately, we did have a resident that suffered some severe injuries from that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. One of the reasons this all came up tonight was I had a phone call from a person that's on hospice, and their concern is, how do they get out? How do you get in to help them after a snowstorm? They have neighbors that will help them clean out at some point when it's all done snowing. But if that happens to come in the middle of a snowstorm or right after a snowstorm at any point, and nobody's been able to get there, have you any procedures, anything in place to help those people so they can get in, or you can get in or they can get out if there's a problem?
Yes. That's a great question. And the short answer is yes. We will get there. We will get in. And this is a unique situation where we have a resident that's on hospice, but even residents that have no illness, we all know when it's snowing, especially during larger snowstorms, it's tough to keep up on that. Even people that are out there actively shoveling and snowblowing, depending on how much snow we're going to get, access can always be a concern, even with able-bodied residents. So yes, within the fire rescue department, we have response procedures that our department, we have a pickup truck with a plow, and during snowstorms, we actually staff that plow because that keeps both fire stations open. We don't, although the DPW is excellent post-storm to come with the loaders and kind of clean up the intersections and salt the parking lot, the DPW has their hands full during a storm. So both the fire department and the police department, historically, we've always taken care of our own lots. So we go back and forth between the stations, making sure that our access is good. But during a storm, when we have an emergency, whether it's a fire emergency or a medical emergency, and again, it depends on conditions, but if it's an active snowstorm, that plow will go on the emergency call, just in the event that we would have to gain access. Now again, depending on how much snow and foot, I'm hoping we don't see it this year, but there have been years in past where we've had a couple of feet of snow that's dropping, and although our plow can do some work, the DPW in those cases, they are on the air. So we don't hesitate to even call the DPW in some circumstances and say, hey, we need you to divert somebody over to this street because we need a larger piece of equipment to just get us down this road right now. Typically, we're able to do it, but it's not uncommon for us to open up the end of a driveway. All of our engines and ambulances during this time of year, we have snow shovels on them. It's not uncommon that for the first 24 to 48 hours, especially with our elderly residents, that we wind up shoveling our way in, because again, it's a safety issue for us. If we can't get safe access upstairs, then we're not going to be able to extricate a patient safely out. So it is not uncommon that within the first 24 to 48 hours, that we are usually the ones on an emergency that wind up shoveling walkways, shoveling stairs, and gaining access, at least to some extent, into a driveway. So I certainly don't want, especially the elderly residents or those who may have an illness, like this resident that contacted you on hospice, I don't want anybody to fear that we're not going to get there. We will get there, and we will get in.
Just as a follow-up, "we will," that means the fire department?
Correct.
Because you are speaking as the fire chief. Do you have, are the DPW, can you call them? Are they readily available?
Yes.
So if you, you can get tied up someplace. You could be on one side of town or on a couple of streets over, and you've got two calls coming back to back.
Yep.
You can get ahold of the DPW and let them know that I need some help just to open up or access a?
Yeah, absolutely. So all the DPW vehicles have mobile radios in them. Many of the supervisors, including the DPW director, they have, some of them have portable radios. I know the DPW director, he monitors both the police and fire frequencies. So the fire department has the ability to call DPW and vice versa. So we have interoperability, and that happens usually once a storm. Many times, the DPW will run into an emergency themselves. They'll onsite a car accident, or they'll onsite, they'll jump on the fire frequency to call fire alarm and make notifications. So we have very good interoperability.
Understand. I knew the answer to that just from my years at the firehouse, but I wanted to be sure that you answered that so that the general public knew that there is communication between departments, so that if one can help out the other in case of anything happens.
Absolutely.
Do not hesitate to call, and I think, one thing, if I may, if somebody calls and says, you know, I've got some sort of a medical or anything, it might be a good idea for them to say, you know what, I'm not shoveled out. When they call the dispatcher and say, 9/11, I says, you know, this is what I have for a problem, and I'm not shoveled out. Just to give them an idea, give them a heads up ahead of time.
Yeah.
Just a little bit more information.
Yeah, and that has happened. We have had that information. Again, it depends on, usually it depends on the emergency and the severity of it as to whether or not that information, the mindset of a caller passes that on, but we have received that information en route. But regardless, we have the resources, and we will 100%, we will get to you one way or another, whether we're going to hike it in or not, we will get to that.
Appreciate that. Has anybody else got any other questions? Okay. I thank you very much. Oh, yes. Mr. Coyle, please.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, during every snowstorm, working every storm, we listen to the radios as the fire chief indicated, and we will dispatch a plow truck every time there's an emergency to any location. I immediately contact the plow on that route to make sure if they haven't been in that area recently, that they get right over there and plow that road, and we try to get there in front of the ambulance and get the road cleared. So as the chief mentioned, we work together. They'll dispatch us, and if there's any issues on the roads that we see, we notify the police. So there's constant communication, and we make sure that we can get through any snowstorm to get emergency access to those residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Is anybody got anything else? Thank you so much for coming in and explaining that to us, because I think you've kind of put a little bit more ease in the residents now with the phone calls and the bad weather.
Very good.
Be safe out there.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. The first item we have is there a representative from the Feng Restaurant? Okay. Need a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. This is a, let's see. We had to have additional documents that was requested by the ABCC, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Jacobson. You can explain a little bit about what we have in front of us.
Certainly, and I think the attorney would be able to speak to it as well, but my understanding is that the application was initially submitted to the ABCC, and additional documents were required, I believe potentially the bylaws of the organization, to indicate the members of the board. So they had to submit additional information to the ABCC, which is now requiring an additional vote of the board, if that's correct. Is that a basic summary?
Yes. ABCC came back with two questions. Good evening. My name is Mei Hui-Hu. I represent Feng Restaurant Inc. ABCC came back with two comments, one of which is that we forgot to attach the stock purchase and sale agreement, which I am including in this package today. And the other aspect is, under the ABCC bylaws, there's actually a requirement that majority of the directors of a corporation be citizen. So the number of directors on the board of directors for the corporation is important. So at this point, they wanted to make sure that the one person on the board for the corporation is indeed a citizen, and also under the corporate bylaw, we only require one member to be on the board of directors, and therefore I submit the bylaws to clarify that.
Any members of the board got any questions or comments? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I see, I'm looking at the bylaws, and I did read the ABCC's recommendation that three shareholders require three directors unless otherwise stated in the article. So under Article III, it talks about the board of directors, and there shall be one, one director shall consist, the board of directors shall consist one member. I'm still not seeing where it addresses three shareholders. Have you had discussions with the, with ABCC that there's no additional language needed for the three shareholders?
That's a very good question. Under the, I don't remember the chapter, but under the Massachusetts, when a corporation does not have a bylaw or the articles of incorporation does not indicate clearly, under the Massachusetts law, when there are three shareholders, there is a requirement that there be three directors, and therefore that reference is indicated on the ABCC's comments. I think the bylaws we have here clearly indicates that there's only, at any time, regardless number of shareholders, we only require one board member on the board of directors.
Okay. And it's my understanding you have been in communications with ABCC representative regarding these documents?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody got anything else? Have you got anything else you'd like to add?
I do not. I just want to thank you for all your time for taking consideration of our application.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now I will entertain a motion for the license.
I'll make a motion that we approve the all-alcoholic beverage license, change of officers, and change of beneficial interests with the additional documents as requested by ABCC, with the two documents referenced to be sent to the ABCC.
Second. Is there any further question or comment? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, and good luck. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Under 5A, we'll move right along here, and we'll approve a vote, approve vote and sign note for the sale of $82,000 bond anticipation note dated December 18, 2019, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Kastanovich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just want to let you know that we had to go out for a mini short-term note to meet four pieces of equipment that didn't make our October borrowing. The board approved the ban, I believe, at your second meeting in October, I was away. And these pieces of equipment before you tonight totaling $82,000 make up $10,000 for town hall alarm system, $28,000 for electronic fingerprinting system at the police department, a one-ton truck with a plow, $34,000 for PAX, and Lemansky bleachers of $10,000. All of these items were approved under the five-year capital plan. They were approved by town meeting. Although you voted the life expectancy of this equipment at a previous meeting, this never made the $3.4 million borrowing. So these items were already approved. We have, we are, we had a note sealed today with an interest rate of 1.75 awarded to Hometown Bank. These short-term notes will mature on the same date of the 3.4, at which time we will either renew those bans or we'll bond them at that time, all depending on the condition of the market. So that's an explanation of what's before you tonight.
Any questions? Have you got anything else to add?
No, I do not.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the sale of the $82,000 bond anticipation note dated December 18, 2019, otherwise known as the note, to Hometown Bank at the price of $82,000 is hereby approved and confirmed. The note shall be payable on November 6, 2020, and shall bear interest at the rate of 1.75%.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further questions? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And Ms. Jacobson, have we got representatives here that we can have come up, that we can sign these documents tonight?
We do. We have the town clerk and the treasurer.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Now we'll go to item 5B, under gift acceptances. This is in accordance with the Massachusetts law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and we
And use the certificate and covenant, the tax exempt status of the notes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so you have two of these documents?
Actually, there's three.
There's three, okay. And that's all, Miriam?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie.
And you go to the next one, gift acceptances. Can you ask for a motion to move 6A up because this and this are related?
Do you want to call on this one first?
I will follow. I need to make a journey, I have a catch. But if we could take them together?
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now we'll go to item 5B, under gift acceptances. This is in accordance with the national law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. And we've got a couple here in front of us tonight. Is there one here for the $5,000? Does it have?
Yes, let's see.
I didn't get that one. I missed in my bag.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay. First off, the executive office of the town manager, from the Fur Friends, in the form of $5,000, and that's donation to the dog park. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude. I don't know if there is a contact that we could also just send a letter signed by the chair stating, ah, thanks for that as well.
Okay, second. All right. Any further questions, comments?
Just under discussion, I'm not sure if we can make a second motion while this one is pending, but we might want to take town manager, item 6A, which I think addresses that?
Yep.
Move up agenda, item 6A.
Okay, we've got, before we do that, we have this in front of us for a vote. So the motion has been made and seconded for the $5,000 from Fur Friends. Any further discussion on that? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And you know what, while we're here, we're just going to handle these other two here in front of us, and then we'll go right into that item. From the Vietnam Veterans of America, $100 to the fire department gift account.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And then, for a total of $90, the first from Donna Bacon, $15, Gary and Diane Lockwood, And this is for the Auburn Animal Shelter in memory of Jerry Budenhagen, and this is for the Catherine Sabina Animal Program.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And Mrs. Goodrich, would you please?
Just a motion to move up agenda item, I've closed it now.
6A.
6A, to just wrap up the discussion on the $5,000.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And can you have?
Great, I'm ready.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So I just want to explain to the board what we're doing here with these two items. So the first, as you just accepted, the Fur Friends of Auburn have increased their donation, which originally the board voted to accept for $20,000. That $20,000 allowed us to apply for a $200,000 grant through the Stanton Foundation for the construction of a dog park. And it allowed for us to get a $20,000, which was 10% of the $200,000 construction grant, a $20,000 design grant. And then, upon completion of the design and going out to bid, we would then get a grant for $180,000 for construction, along with the $20,000 from the original grant donation from the Fur Friends, with total $200,000 construction project. So using those figures, the consultant that we hired, under the design grant, came back to us with conceptual designs. We've met several times in the last couple of months, most recently about two weeks ago, and met with the consultant and looked at the final conceptual design. And at that meeting, the Fur Friends, who participate in the process with us from the beginning, indicated to us that they have additional funds that they're willing to donate, if that would help increase the cost of the grant. Because when they design documents of being prepared and the concept plans are in place, it looks like, for $200,000, we can get a very nice park, but for more than that, we can add in some of what we call alternate items, that may be put aside in case there isn't enough money. So in other words, you might have alternate items, being additional benches, or additional landscaping, or additional trees, or certain ground treatments, such as canine grass, which is very expensive. So the Fur Friends would like the opportunity to get as many of those extra items as we can, over and above the $200,000, so they're willing and have now just donated another five. So where this brings us is, again, based on the formula for the Stanton Foundation, we're allowed to get, with a 10% match, Stanton Foundation will then provide another 90%. So with a $25,000 match from the Fur Friends, we're now eligible for applying for $250,000 to the Stanton Foundation. So our understanding is, from Amy Kontos, who contacted our animal control officer, who contacted the Stanton Foundation after we met with the Fur Friends, that they are willing to increase our grant amount without having us apply for a new grant. But we wanted to come back to the board for an additional vote, because I went back and looked, that first vote that you took for the dog park authorized us to apply for a grant in the amount of $200,000. So now that grant amount would be, we don't have to reapply for it, but we would need your vote to accept and expend up to $250,000 from the Stanton Foundation. So that puts the project at 250, and we actually get another $5,000 more than that, because the design normally would have been $25,000. But the design budget of 20 was based on a $200,000 project. So that extra five can go toward the project. So it does not require any changes to anything that's already been done. It will just enable us, when we go out to bid, to reduce the amount of added, we call them add-deduct items or alternate items, put them actually into the regular bid, and maybe only have a few alternate items. I'm looking at Bill Coyle, because he was, he's been in that meeting, and his office has actually been the primary contact with the consultant and the engineer, to make sure that it complies with everything that we're trying to do. The goal of this, again, is, we received the grant last January for the design, and the Stanton requires that within the first year of receiving the design grant, that you complete your design, your bid documents, and actually go out to bid for it. So that should be done. Our intent, through the consultants, to get it done by the second or third week in December, if possible, at the very worst-case scenario, by the end of December. And the grant would be out to bid in time to meet our deadline. I believe the Stanton Foundation has to review the final grant documents before we actually go out to bid with them. So this additional amount will allow us, again, to put more amenities into the park that are currently on an alternate list. No additional cost to the town, and we're just grateful for the Fur Friends, because their additional $5,000 nets an additional $50,000 toward the project.
Okay. So any comments, questions? Is Mr. Coyle, anything he would like to add?
Governor Proffitt.
There you go. Just giving you the opportunity to go. Okay, if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, that the board vote to amend a board vote, a previous board vote, to authorize the Stanton Foundation grant application up to $250,000. So that's from $200,000 to $250,000.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we go back to item 5C. And this is the 2020 liquor license renewals, and we have that list here in front of us. And they were reviewed by the treasurer collector and the DCG with no issues indicated. Has anybody got any questions, comments? Being none, I'll entertain them, being, having none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the license renewals, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said licenses, subject to all the conditions stated upon them, failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the licenses, render them null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG on the licenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know last year, I had requested that we include our, a copy of our liquor license policy. I think it's a good idea to include it annually, so that license holders are kept, reminded of the conditions on their license. So I would respectfully ask that we include a copy of their, of our liquor license policy with all renewals.
Mr. Bertheum, will you amend that?
I'll amend it, as stated by Ms. Goodrich.
Okay. Is there any further discussions? And thank you, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. Mr. Bertheum?
And it's been seconded?
By both of us, but yes. You'll come in in a second.
Okay, is there any further comment? Okay, being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And now, under 5D, we have 2020 license renewals, and under number one, I will turn to Town Manager for a little explanation.
Thank you. Yes, on, on the first, number one here, the license for City Line Towing is currently listed under the name of Michael Robidoux, who unfortunately passed away in a horrible accident this summer. And his surviving spouse will now be the owner of the business. So we did talk to attorney Bob Henigan, who is town council, for his opinion on whether Mrs. Robidoux is required to file a new application for a license under her name, or whether the board can simply vote to transfer the current license, under Michael Robidoux's name, to Sharon Robidoux's name. Town council responded that a simple transfer, a vote by the board to transfer the license, the current license, to Sharon Robidoux's name, would cover it. And that is why this is on as the first vote. Then, under the second vote, when you're taking all of the license renewals together for next year, it would automatically be renewed, now in her name, as opposed to her deceased husband's.
Okay. Any questions? Being none, I'll entertain a motion for item 5D1.
I'll make a motion to transfer the license from City Line Towing to the owner, Sharon Robidoux.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And so we'll go to D2, for the license renewals, and you have that list in front of you. You got any questions, comments?
I just have a question. I had a resident speak to me in the past regarding businesses whose licenses are, you know, have been up for renewal and maybe are not approved, and they're, you know, pending one thing or another. And if they're, if we have a public list, I guess there's cities and towns throughout the United States that they, they provide a list of, might be restaurants or facilities that, that are currently in limbo for renewal of a license, so that, you know, people know, I don't know if it's ethical to put why they're, they may be in limbo, but just the fact that, you know, their license is pending, or anything like that. So I was just wondering if the town manager could give us a little bit of information along that line.
Certainly, I believe the same resident might have contacted me regarding that. And I believe the resident was asking if the town, or the Board of Health specifically, would consider publishing the list of those businesses who did not have their health permits, either approved or renewed, so that people could see publicly that maybe there was a reason for it. Our concern in doing that was that sometimes there are extenuating circumstances as to why something might not be renewed. As Mr. Bertheum just said, there could be various reasons. They may not have had the appropriate paperwork. You saw our case tonight that that happened. The ABCC needed additional documentation on a liquor license. There was no concern with the liquor license, it was the documentation that wasn't in order, so the vote had to be taken again. Our concern in publishing a list of those businesses that don't get a license is, it may have been a minor issue that had to be addressed, then it's addressed, and was there any damage done to the business because they didn't get their license, and nobody realized it then? They addressed the concern, and they weren't licensed at that time. So the Board of Health did discuss doing this, and they're still considering how they could do this. I think they're probably willing to publish a list of those facilities that received a license, but the concern is, by not putting a business on there, do we have to then explain why they didn't get a license? Was it administrative oversight, or was it a health issue where they had to address it? And if they did address it, and they did it within the appropriate amount of time, is it fair to have published that they didn't get the license on that date? So there are some issues that the Board of Health is discussing, along with this request. So as of now, we have not been doing that, other than whatever is on the board agendas, where people can see the list, as you see here, this list would appear on all our agendas, so you can see who actually did get the licenses versus who did not. So that's where it stands now. The resident did send something from, I believe it was South Carolina, a community down in South Carolina that did do this. There were multiple, multiple restaurants, hundreds and hundreds of restaurants in this particular community. It's a resort town. Here, we have fewer restaurants, so it would become more obvious that there was a problem with a certain restaurant. And I believe that's the Board of, I don't want to speak for the Board of Health, but that's my understanding, that their concern is any type of, of negative impact to the business by publishing the fact that they didn't get their license on a certain.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any other questions, comments, concerns? Being none, we'll have a motion for the license renewals for 2020.
I'll make a motion that we approve the license renewals, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the licenses and render them null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG on the licenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further comments? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Now, we go to item D3, and this is for the end of the year, and its renewal applications that come in by December 31st, 2019, and have no outstanding issues. We have not any plans to have any meetings between now and the first of the year, so now we are going to take a look at this and see if we can get that done, let the licenses be renewed if there's no issues.
Excuse me, Ms. Jim.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I believe at, at a certain point, the board took a vote to have a meeting on December 30th. So I think there is a meeting on the 30th, but we still wanted this conditional vote to come in, so we could renew the license prior to that meeting on the 30th.
Very good, thank you.
If we don't need that meeting on the 30th, I believe the conversation with the board was, we would let you know if we had any items that had to come in. We may not need to have it, but if we do need to have a meeting, it would be on the 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. And at this point, I believe there's just a handful, there's a couple of drain layers licenses that don't always come in for renewal, because they may not have any plans to do any work, and those don't have the same requirements. We do have a couple of businesses that, despite several calls and emails, have not responded to the renewals. So this week, we're going to be preparing a certified letter to some of those businesses as a final reminder that they need to get their renewal application in, in order to continue to operate. So, but that is just a handful, I believe it's three, three to four businesses.
Okay. Any further questions? Mrs. Goodrich?
I just have one question on the pending, and it's more of our, our policy or procedure. It's my recollection that if they do not renew by the end of the year, then we would require them to come in before the board. I mean, these are three businesses, certainly, that I would expect would renew, under the pending, the top three, certainly, are businesses that I would expect would renew. But if we, if we make this condition, if we take this conditional vote, and they still haven't come, come in, it's our policy, am I correct, that we would require them to come in, in January for a license renewal?
I believe the policy has been, and I'll have to check it, that they'd have to come in for a new license. There would no longer be a renewal, there would be a new application, which requires additional work on their, on their part. Correct?
Thanks for that definition.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Okay, on that note, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the additional pending licenses for renewal applications that come in by December 31st, 2019, that have no outstanding issues, with the conditions placed upon it on agenda item D2. the conditions placed upon it on agenda item D2.
I'll second that. We need further discussion. Sharon, you have that? Okay. Be no comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Now, under 5E, we have a vote to approve the January special town meeting warrant, and it's subject to final review by town council. We do have a copy of the warrant, and again, this is for us to distribute to town council. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Jacobson, have you got anything?
Through the chair, just for the public so they understand, we are having a special town meeting. Again, it's on January 21, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. We initially proposed that we have this special town meeting because we had a really tremendous opportunity to have our, our, by one year on the tip list. And in order to do that, we need to have the town meeting authorize the board to select men to do the right-of-way easements and takings that are required for the project. When we opened the warrant for a week, we did reach out to the school committee to see if they had any articles, and they did submit one, which you'll see here as Article 3. And the DPW director, who's here, in case there are any questions on that, also submitted an article, Article 4, which is actually, there are four articles, I understand, but three, one standard and the other three. So Article number four was from DPW director Bill Coyle to appropriate $55,000 from a reimbursement we had received from FEMA for 2018 snow reimbursement to purchase and install a mobile column heavy-duty lifting system, which, and Bill could probably explain better than I could, if you would take a minute, explain what that is. But it's, it's a safety issue that we feel should be addressed sooner than later, so rather than waiting for a May town meeting, this was an opportunity for us to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So the article is to purchase a mobile column heavy-duty lifting system. Essentially, what that is, is these are portable columns that we can actually whale to the individual trucks to lift the trucks. In particular, benefits several. One is that currently, the fire apparatus, the fire trucks, we are unable to get those onto a lift. So quite often, we're working underneath the fire truck, which is, you know, it's not really the ideal way to be working on a vehicle, and it also limits our ability to perform many of the repairs that are necessary. So, for example, if you needed to drop a fuel tank or whatnot, or another item to get underneath the truck, we can't get the fire truck up high enough, so we have to send those trucks out for service. In addition, our current lift, which is not a portable unit, it's a fixed ramp you, you would drive up onto, and then it would lift the larger trucks up. Again, the fire trucks won't fit on that lift. That is up for inspection, I believe it's in March, and there are some concerns as to whether or not the lift will actually pass inspection. So we thought that this would be a good opportunity to utilize the FEMA money, which is reimbursement from last year's snowstorm, to purchase this lift. In addition to that, the, by having this additional lift, it would extend the life of that lift that we are concerned with, so that we'd be able to use that for hopefully several more years to come. And the other benefit is this particular lift, if we were to purchase something that was stationary in place, would probably take up three or four of our parking stalls inside of our garage. And where this is portable, if we're not servicing any trucks, we can actually move this out of our way. We're very limited to space, in particular during snowstorms. We keep all the larger trucks stored inside so that they're able to make sure that they start up and running. And so to have the lift where we can move it out of our way will allow us the benefit of being able to store that, that equipment inside. So we think it's a huge benefit for us. We'll be able to take, if the truck, rather than trying to push a large truck up onto this current ramp, we'll be able to move the, move the system over to where the truck is, and if we're able to, we can service it right in its current location without trying to move it and potentially damage the vehicle as well.
Mr. Berthew?
Couple of questions. One, so this portable lift, it would be on like a tow hitch that would get towed behind a vehicle?
It's actually something that you can move physically. Each, each person can, can move them themselves.
Okay. And so I see here that it almost looks like it's four separate.
Right, they're four, four individual lifts, exactly.
Okay. And this lift, $55,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money for, for what that does. So I guess my second question is, obviously, I know you've done your homework, but will that lift now the heaviest truck that we have in town and, and beyond?
The only truck I believe may not be able to lift would be the ladder truck. I think, I think that would be the only one we might not be able to lift.
Might be an issue of the distance between the, the length of the truck, I should say.
Right, right. Been talking with our fleet mechanic, that was the only truck that he felt that we may not be able to lift still. But all other than the fire apparatus, we will be able to, and will benefit, you know, the department, the town as a whole by the additional services that we can do in-house now.
And any, can you all move to any of the safety of, we obviously have a portable thing, and we have a, a human mechanic underneath a truck now. What would the safety factors of that lift?
Well, this is something that we will have training that'll come along with it. I also ask my mechanics to visit locations where they're currently being used, are the DPWs, DPWs, and everyone is very satisfied with it. I think it's something that's going to be a much safer situation for our mechanics versus going under the fire apparatus now with the current system that they're using. So it's going to be a safer system.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Lovetti?
I was just looking at this that you passed down, and it's pretty interesting. But I was wondering which one, if you already have one picked out that you're looking at or specifically?
We do. I would have to take and review that again to point which one, yes.
Don't need to see it before we take a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the warrant? Again, this is for a vote to transmit to the town council for his review. We will get it back at some point and ask questions on it and before town meeting, but...
Motion that we approve the town warrant, subject to final review by town council, the January special town meeting warrant.
Second. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And I guess what I'll do is I will just repeat, and we probably will repeat again, that January 21, at January 21 of 2020, at 7 o'clock, that'll be at the high school auditorium for the town meeting for these four articles. So again, we will try to let people know that that town meeting is coming up so we can have a quorum and continue our projects.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I may just do things. Also, in addition, it's not on tonight, but we just do want to remind people that. We have a snow date in case we need it, which, you know, that is typically a very snowy time of January 22nd, and a second snow date of January 29th. So we, hopefully, we can get this done on the 21st. And while we're here, I just, if I can just take a minute to thank DPW and Director Bill Coyle and his entire crew for the great job they did. Not only did we have a tough snowstorm on a holiday weekend because it was Thanksgiving weekend, it starts on a Sunday, it just makes much more coordination. I want to thank Ed Kaczynowicz and others who were involved in coordinating that on Sunday for a delayed opening on Monday. And then to get hit again with another snowstorm immediately after it. Auburn's official total was 17 inches.
Correct.
So that was a difficult storm to get early in the season, and they did, as always, they did a great job. So I want to thank them.
Thank you.
And I would say the same thing, that you did a great job. I did get a call, and we did get a call, and you addressed it, that Vine and Swanson, Vine and Murray Ave, or someplace down in that area about sidewalks. I know that some of the sidewalks still aren't done. You're still in the process of taking care of them?
Yes. We plow over 20 miles of sidewalks. When we have a small snow event, if there's three or four inches, we can usually get to that very quickly because we use what's called a V-plow. And when we have a large event with, such as this, where we end up with 17 inches of snow, sometimes the windrow of snow on the side of the road can be close to three feet deep. So we can't use the V-plow in that situation because it would, quite frankly, make a mess. So we have to use a snow blower, so that goes very slow. So we coordinate with the, with the school department as to which sidewalks are their priority before they open school. So we identify those sidewalks around the schools, and we will tackle those first, and then we move beyond that location. I believe in that particular area, I remember, I looked at it that morning before school. In fact, I had a concern with the intersection, and I think at 4:30 in the morning, when I talked to the highway superintendent, make sure they went over the loader to get the snow off the intersection, because that was always a concern in years past, which they did before school had opened. That was at the corner of Vine and, and Swanson. And that morning, when I drove the road, they had plowed down towards J Street, but I don't think, they hadn't gotten to all the way around Rethel yet. So I think the concern from the caller was further down, and I think that, that day, they did address it. But even now, we're still completing some of the sidewalks out there. Hopefully, with the rain and the 50-degree weather, maybe whatever's left out there will melt, and we won't have to do anymore. But it can take a week to complete all of the sidewalks. And you got to keep in mind, too, that the people who plow the roads are the same people who plow the sidewalks. So when they've worked, you know, 30 hours, they're exhausted, and they need to get some rest. And so it's hard for us to even get anybody that's able to continue on with the sidewalks because, quite frankly, they're just exhausted. So they need to get some rest and then go back out and continue on. So it's, the sidewalks are always a difficult process for us, but we try to get them done as quickly as, as we can. But we do prioritize the area around the schools.
Thank you for that explanation, Bill.
I do want to thank my, my crew, too. They did a great job with very little sleep. And, you know, we're there all night long, and the next day, we have to keep working, and then the next night, keep working. We don't have shifts that come in to relieve us. If we have to work three shifts straight or four shifts straight, it's the same people working straight through. So they did a great job, and I do appreciate all their hard work, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody got anything else? Okay. All right. The next we have is item 5F, proclamations and recognitions. We have none. We have no table items under seven, and no board member writings. Are there any public comments? We have minutes from, well, before I do that, I'll ask, is there any, board members have anything? And Ms. Jacobson? You got anything?
I'll go on record just to publicly thank all the people that were involved with the tree lighting ceremony that we just had this past weekend. You know, being the weather that we had and the conditions that we had, it rained all that entire day, and yet, everything was set up great, and I think we're blessed to have the rain stop for a little while while we actually had our celebration. But again, as Mr. Coyle said to all of his departments and all of his, you know, people that, that put this, coordinate these events and put them on, I believe it's Sterns Electric also was instrumental in putting the lights on the Christmas tree. You know, it's just, our town is extraordinary in the fact that we're able to pull off these events even with all the weather and conditions and everything that go on, and it's well-attended. So I thank the residents, too, for coming out, you know, after kind of a dismal day, and really kind of have a real great celebration. So I just wanted to publicly thank everybody for that, residents and workers of the town.
Thank you, Mr. Berthew.
Thank you.
Does anybody got anything else? Being none, I have minutes from the November 12, 2019 meeting. Are there any comments, questions, submissions? Being none, I'll accept them as presented. And... I'll turn to the chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. Under discussion.
Go ahead. A very merry Christmas and happy holidays to all, and a very happy New Year. And thank you to the board for their time, their commitment, their efforts. Appreciate it. And now a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, and good night.